Good morning.
Good morning, this is July twenty six, twenty twenty three. The time is now nine AM and Kevin Day, Chair of the Custer County Board of Commissioners. I will call this meeting of the board to order. If you do have your cell phones, please silence them at this time. And if you would join me for the pledge and the invocation.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
If you need Bill, we could unplug it for a little bit if you want.
That's okay.
If you join me for the invocation. Father, we come before you this morning and we thank you that we were able to come together and do the business of the county. We asked that as we come together that you would be with us. We ask that you would work your will. We ask that you would give us your guidance in your direction. With your staff system, Jesus. Amen. We get a roll call please. Presence. Right, we don't have anybody in the audience. Couple of people online. But in state if anyone goes to speak later, if they could identify themselves for the record. Any amendments to the agenda? I might just mention that we will have an executive session scheduled for eleven o'clock today. So we will. When we're done with this first section. Recess this meeting and then reconvene for that. And that will be for negotiations. Okay. Public comment, no one here. All right. No unfinished business, new business on the agenda.
Skip minutes.
What's that? Oh, I apologize. Actually, I don't see them on here. Are you redoing those today?
Yeah. They're.
Could I see? It's a good thing you had this for a sentence. So that is the minutes that we Kelly has sent us July twenty.
It's a good thing I see why you made a big deal of this because there's a lot of work.
There is.
The June twenty ninth, I think we got that twice, July fifth, sixth and twelfth.
I would move we approve the minutes submitted for June twenty ninth, July fifth, July sixth and July twelve.
I would second that motion. Any discussion on those?
Nope, they were good. And I did see.
Thanks Kelly for the job.
All right. Those in favor of approving the minutes for June twenty ninth, July fifth, sixth and twelfth. Signified by saying I. My that motion carries. Thank you for that Kelly, I'm my apologies, I was working off a different. It's probably when you had sent me. I think I pulled one up from any of the other emails. So to the new business and we have consideration of selecting applicants to interview for the county manager position. Kelly has sent the resumes and applications to us. And I think for now while discussing these, if we can refer to them as candidate A through H. That would be brilliant, I believe. I didn't know. And then. We did have a discussion with the attorney the other day. When we have finalists. To. Interview, I know he was of the opinion that we announced those names.
Yeah, I'm not sure why I was a little confused about. We've never made any name public on any of our hearings until. We've got we've got confirmation that they're going to accept the job, the only time we've ever. We've never said who we've been interviewed to or anything else, but.
We don't have to, I mean, he's an attorney and it's advice. We've been doing it, that's our presence, we can keep doing it as far as I'm concerned.
That's where I feel Bill, but I guess not a big deal, I don't. I just think that's personnel stuff.
With it and maybe I just. You can make our selection call A, B, C and then give him a call and say, no, we got three. Why do we have, what, why do you think we have to? Give us a good case then we can do it.
And. Yes, we can try to verify that, I don't know if he's available or not. But. So what I'm hearing now is you, both of you gentlemen are of the opinion to go ahead and keep them as that. Candidate A, B, C and D. I am going either direction, so I would I would go along with that. And then. I would open it up for discussion then. As far as these applicants are concerned.
Well, I I went through the list. I'm not trying to set the tone here, but I I personally thought there were four that I would be interested in getting.
I actually have. Four as well. How about you, sir?
Yeah.
I had three possible.
I I could live with three. We're going to interview those on Thursday, correct, starting at eleven.
Yes, so when we select the applicants to move forward, I will contact them today to try to set those up. I guess I would go ahead and give you the ones that I have. And we can mark our list and see how we come, how everything falls out. I had. Candidate A. I had. Candidate D. I had. Candidate G. And the one I could go either way on probably would be candidate E.
Say them again, Kevin, you got A, D.
A, so Adam, Doug, Edward and George.
Who you got, Ken?
I had A. B. E. Yeah.
A.
You're saying yours, Bill?
No, I'm not saying I'm on, say yours again.
A, E, E and F.
Yeah, and I had, and I'm I'm looking at that, I want to relook at one before I commit to it, but. A. B and E, I like H.
You said A, D.
Yeah, A, D, E, H, right now I want to look at G again.
See that E?
Yeah.
And then possibly H.
A, D, H.
And what I'm seeing just off the top of my head is we're all in agreement on A. And D. And E, is that correct? And then we each have one for F, G.
So take a hard look at H because he worked for thirty years in county municipal government, working with. City of Bubba and counties, so why you guys didn't think he was worth looking at? I believe he is. Thirty years, eighty nine through. Two thousand twenty is Buffalo. Public Works Assistant Director of Public Works, big deal.
And then next.
We're in the meeting to vet the applicants for manager.
Maybe we log in again.
I did that yesterday afternoon.
I couldn't assess him. I got a bump clear out. Anyway.
Well, one. I think D. Reason that I had one D and I didn't vote this one is because D had actually more of a related. Type of situation in this. Is my reasoning on that.
Between he and.
For your one is to look here.
H, yeah, you you said. He had some, but it's.
Yeah, so.
I gotta pull it up again.
Okay, since you get there, go ahead.
Yeah, I. And then. Didn't place a whole lot of emphasis on. H is. Kind of Buffalo to me, didn't have to do with county manager stuff because he was an engineer.
Not how I read it. I gotta get back there, okay? I figured out what my password is, V O C C two two six seven, or is it Custer?
That I don't know, I know my password.
Yeah, it was.
Which one had, which one of Kelly's had the.
I got it, it's only twentieth year and five.
That's what I was looking for.
And I could trim mine down to three if I needed to, if that's you guys.
Like we're unanimous, so most three and then we each have another.
I mean, worked, you know, I still think H is stronger than D personally.
Say what?
I think H is stronger than D, D was enough, didn't they work with the foundation preservation boards? Man, it's a lot of that, the other guy.
And it wasn't as that, if they get some training for that, then what to me like. H, I would have liked to have seen him finish filling out his application. And provide. And provide. Dates. And the things that we actually asked on the application, that's not there.
Not even. H was by himself.
Yes, that was last.
I always thought it was weird that the application wasn't filled out. See the resume or something.
And then all that.
Yeah.
It was not actually included in the resume. So that.
Yeah, but he was, I think he was in a rush.
So. That to me kinda. Because then some of the information we were asking for is not there.
Was resume down below.
But he doesn't have all that in it either.
Yeah. Yeah, again.
I would be willing to go with, since we all have one that we, that the others didn't come up with. But we have three that we are all in agreement on, I would, I would be agreeable to go with the three that we're all. In agreement with.
Yeah, after relooking, I agree.
Yeah, I could drop my fourth one.
I could as well. May. I thought, I thought my fourth one might be a little stronger than one of the others, but, uh, I'm. Not necessarily, that's just. Different thing, it's going through these.
I'm looking at G one more time, cause for some reason you like them.
Why'd you like?
Let me go back through here and have them mark them all down.
Jeez.
I liked him initially and then, uh, I saw where he's been. Postal lands and all those slides.
Yeah, had a lot of post office background, just. I guess I could say something kind of struck a chord a little bit, uh, I mean, it's not anything that I'm mad about or anything like that. So. And that was, he was the one that, uh, had worked in for that one foundation that actually. Provided some training.
Yeah.
For city and county manager.
International city county management.
Although it appears as though they had a third party coming in and doing that training. But I guess that was probably the one reason that I was leaning toward him.
Lot, lot of training again, but.
You willing to go with A, D, and E, Bill?
Yeah, I was just wanting, I was baiting on whether. Cause I did look at, uh.
She. I wondered why Kevin did, because that.
I think that was, that was probably my reasoning there. As much as anything.
That's odd, he was with the army for. Twenty years. A lot of leaderships though. It may be worth interviewing. Four people. For personal manage, operate. Yeah, certainly. I like him better than I did before.
Must have presented a strong argument.
Say it again, well, you know, you look at, I didn't realize that he had all the other training and management stuff from the army, that's a big deal. Project management leadership started.
I will leave that ball in your guys' court if you wanna get it, fine, if not, I will be good.
I don't think it's, I think it'd be wise, cause you never know in the interview, find other thing. We got time to do it. Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Your thoughts, Jim?
He was, uh, he was a leader. Program manager. Lots of training and. Look at the train. He missed out a lot of certifications. But we don't have to train. That the technical stuff, software. Thinking you were looking at. And it's. See how he competes.
Bit of three.
I'd like to add the, the G. The, yeah. I, my choice. I think we ought to enter D four, if we got hurt. Pretty strong, yeah, so it shows them. Quite a shot we got. Yeah.
Like for us all to be in agreement, who cared if not? And we'll make a decision otherwise, but.
I think it would, I mean. It is a big deal, firing the most expensive guy in the county, we're paying a lot of money, let's make sure we got the right guy, wanna lose one and crack. And I'm not saying he's the winner, I'm just saying he's a candidate that we should interview. And the interview kind of makes or breaks it, from what we've seen on all our interviews.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah.
You're still at three.
Well, I, I originally had selected four to interview as a number, so I'm not.
I'm not, I'm not saying we should do four either, but.
I'm not.
Just not sure you wanna do this one.
I spent a lot of time going over all these. But he didn't make the cut for me, so.
And that's fair.
I'm, I'm not saying I'm not willing to consider. Interviewing somebody else, but if we were gonna interview four, he wouldn't be my poor choice. So. Agree that I don't wanna get locked into a number and exclude somebody either, uh.
Well, I know both Kevin and I took a look at him, he had a different opinion initially too, so I really think, I really think he's a good, a good one to interview.
Where he lives, right? Yeah.
That is, that is an issue as well.
See what happens.
Doesn't matter to me.
I mean, that's what is amazing, then think about it, he's, he's. That's pretty impressive, somebody willing to do that. And he cares, there's a reason.
There may be a Zoom, the, I don't know, I think.
Let's, let's find out. Yeah.
Let me see something else here, but.
We ask when they can.
And even discounting because we're, that I just wasn't as impressed with him, I thought it was, but.
Sure.
So if we can't discriminate against somebody because of what they're, that's.
Yeah, and he worked, uh. Knows a lot of emergency management stuff, even, even then the man who did Springs Fire in twenty eighteen.
I got an emergency.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying he's familiar with that process, that's what you need, is if we're gonna be managing, think he's gonna be interacting with everybody. That's. Pretty unusual. Anyway, that's my opinion.
I'm trying to find our slot. I thought we made a question on there.
You do, on your questionnaires, on your questions you ask.
Oh. That's correct, I thought I saw it on another application, so that's. That's why I'm looking for something that doesn't exist.
You called Kelly?
There is a start date up here, but he did not fill that in. Right at the show.
I am, I'm like.
Just pull it.
It's. Or bald dome.
So there is a, there is a, there is a place to check when they, and we just could start, this one did not. Put a date down on that, I didn't even look to see if others did or not, I didn't either.
Yeah, some did. Applicant, uh, was. September one. I also personally think this is kind of awkward to do this in an open session. I think this should have been an executive session as well. Do you guys? Do you have your baseline?
I.
For the executive section today?
No. Where do we pick it up?
She gave her, she mailed it to us, we looked at him when we voted on it, um. And it's wondering if they got lost in the mood, it's just.
Yeah, I remember seeing I had it, but, uh.
Okay.
I think it's over here in my.
I know I'm, I know I'm railroad in this a little bit, but during the department, if you guys don't have, I'll, I've got it on the hard drive, I can download it from your email to you.
Okay, we can look for it here, and as we make this decision here. Uh. Well. I mean, I am perfectly good going with the ones that we're in total agreement on, uh.
Yeah, those, clearly we had consensus on those, um.
Well, we've been like the OEM and other things, we, we've not had consensus and we interviewed six people. Uh, not trying to get down to three that we all agree on, and that's crazy. So I, this is a very good guy to interview.
But he wasn't your original four.
No, and it was because, only reason was because I, I didn't look down and, and to see where, uh. He, the training, all the other kind of training that he had, that's based on the, the leadership stuff, this, this guy's, I think, pretty good. That's a good experience. Only four, I don't know why we were worrying about how many we interviewed, this is a good one.
Well, again, it's not about the number, it's about whether or not we agree that he's a good one, that's what it boils down to.
Well.
Correct, if we did, we would have had him on our list, and we didn't, he had him on his list, um. Yeah, you had G on your list, correct, Kevin?
That is correct. Yeah, I'd like to see us in agreement, but, uh, we, if we don't, if we're not in agreement, I am amicable to going. With or without G. Uh, he was on my list, uh. I would probably default to adding him. If we are not in agreement.
And. I could support that, but here's the caveat with me. I would feel better. If we allowed that to be a Zoom interview.
Well, I, I thought that would probably be what it is if we're pushing time.
He wasn't one of my choices, so I obviously wouldn't feel good about asking him to come all the way here to an interview when I, he wasn't on my list to make it anyway. But I'm not supposed to interview him.
We probably oughta ask him because he may have, he's been here. He may have a reason that he be here, I don't know.
Yeah.
Find out whether he is or not.
I always try to be careful about us making decisions on the other people's behalf too.
Yeah.
That's right, so.
I'm not.
If he's really interested, you know, let's find out.
If I, if this individual is not here, I'm not opposed to doing a Zoom interview.
No, and he would get the same. Opportunities from me, whether it's Zoom or in person, I don't care.
We did that before, so.
I can. Consent to interviewing. G.
Thank you, sir. So at the present time, then we have. Excuse me, A. D. E. And G. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
That you have, sir?
Yeah, that's what I got.
Just verifying, I wanna make sure. Uh.
Knowing that there are four other people who applied that are local that we are not going to interview. That we had that thrown in our face last week about we should do something because somebody was local, I disagree with that, I still disagree, doesn't matter to me where they live. There's still people that are local, that were. Put it in the position, so.
Uh. Yes, so, so I guess for everyone, uh, benefit, we did have eight applicants. And we now have four that we're gonna move forward to interview. And four that. Will not be.
For the record, I will not support releasing these names until we hire somebody.
But we agreed to do that already.
Well, we talked about it, but.
Then if you gentlemen are good, would you guys like to vote on those to, to do that or do by consensus here?
So I think we better vote.
Okay. I would make a motion. That we move forward for interviews, candidate A. Candidate B. Candidate E. And candidate G.
I'll second it.
Yeah, the motion on the floor, uh, any discussion here at the table?
Yeah, and I would move to amend your motion and add that the anonymity stays throughout the process until we have the A. Confirmation of the hire.
Second that one, dude.
So I have a, an amendment to the motion. Uh, to maintain the anonymity of the candidates until a decision is made. Uh, discussion on that. Hearing none. Uh, not seeing anything online. Uh, so those in favor of the amendment to the original motion, uh, to maintain the anonymity. Of the candidates until a decision is made, signify by saying aye. Aye, that motion carries. Uh, takes us to the original motion, uh, now an amended motion. Uh, to move forward candidates A, D, E, and G. While maintaining the anonymity of those candidates until a decision is made. Any discussion on that?
I do, so, well, you said you would contact. The candidates that we're gonna interview.
Yes.
Do we have a plan if somebody can't make it on the twenty seventh, which we are scheduled?
A secondary date would be on the thirty first.
We did have one candidate on here that you picked to interview. That is not available tomorrow, but would be available by Zoom.
By Zoom.
But would be available on the thirty first in person, so.
You know which candidate that is?
It's, uh, E.
Which one?
E.
E.
They're out of town right now.
And did you say? I couldn't understand where you said Zoom or afternoon.
Out of, so they're out of town right now.
Okay.
Could do Zoom tomorrow.
Got it.
Or in person on the thirty first.
Okay. And I've been thinking, I, I don't have a following with the Zoom thing.
And if there is a situation like that where they would be available, um, part of this discussion then. Um, what all is on our agenda for the thirty first, uh, besides our?
About four changes, nothing very major.
Uh, we have an executive session, is that to make the decision on?
No, it's on the first, it should say on there what the executive session is. I think that's the sheriff's executive session.
Maybe, I've got email scattered completely throughout.
Yeah. Um, I think if, like in a situation like that, if they are available by Zoom or. In person, available in person on the other date. I would afford them that, the opportunity to choose which they would prefer, if that is good with you gentlemen. Yeah.
We don't, yeah, we don't have the agenda for this, but for the first, correct, Kevin, thirty first, you haven't sent that out yet.
I thought I had sent it to you. It's online, that's what it.
I'll take a look again, I saw it, hold on a second, I just went by it. It was way back when she did it. Pretty far back, let's see if I can find.
I haven't heard. So you've got, uh. The personnel matter. It's, the personnel matter is for county manager, I think it's when you guys discuss. Your applicants, I think that's what you decided on. That would be, because. It is the finalist. No. The finalists, that's what you put on there.
To select.
To select, and then, cause you'll do the, you'll do the.
I can't find it now either, Tom.
We'll have a discussion in executive session, then you're gonna come out and it's got consideration of selecting finalists, yeah.
The executive session is to discuss and we come into regular session and make a selection.
Yes.
Um.
Okay, so based upon the interviews, if we had more than one. One or more finalists, we.
And then you'll decide on it first.
Okay, so.
Would you resend that agenda?
Yes, I would.
Cause I can't find it again.
So. I will contact these individuals and then I will afford them the opportunity if. To. Choose one of those dates, uh, and I will.
So Jordan just sent it.
Well, it's the thirty first, that's not one we were talking about. Oh, we were talking about the first. Of August.
For the executive session?
No, I'm sorry, thirty first, for the executive session, yes, that's correct.
So thirty first doesn't have a lot.
Thirty, thirty first is six items, two, one of which will be in executive session.
See the way, yeah, Jordan just sent it to you, pull it up, read it.
I'm looking at it right now.
You got it, so I see four.
Look under executive sessions.
Executive session is gonna in person.
Business.
Yes.
So, the. Uh, live interview. In person, I guess would be better way.
Dead interviews.
Is way better. Twenty seventh, right? And the Zoom auction.
Zoom auction would be available on the twenty seventh as well.
And all the applicants that said, when they emailed their applications, I let them know. What the plan was for interviews, so that they would kind of have a heads up, and that one was the only one that let me know that. They may have a, that they couldn't be here tomorrow, so.
Who was that? Was that not one of these that we selected?
Yeah, it was E, can't be that one.
Oh.
Okay, so Zoom or in person both will occur tomorrow, nothing on, uh.
Nothing on the thirty first, we have to finish it up on the twenty seventh, correct? Zoom or in person on the twenty seventh, correct?
And then if, if, uh, they are not available for that, the thirty first. Uh. And that would be. Yeah, an afternoon.
Remember what I said, I'm not available in the afternoon.
Okay, so it will take place, it will take place, I would set it up.
After meeting.
Right after the meeting.
I've got a big dental one.
That's correct, you told me that.
And it would be weird if, unless we change our agenda, right, because we were supposed to. Oh no, that's, yeah, the selection on the thirty first.
So. And I could set it up. Beforehand even, so another, if we needed an eight o'clock.
Yeah, that's true, we had to knock one out real quick. I'm tied up Friday, I wouldn't be available Friday, but.
And we could even go with an, uh. Put it in just before that executive session as well. Take a recess and take a recess and in that.
And, uh, these interviews. Is a closed workshop, not an executive session, right? You know, we're gonna invite anyone other than the four of us. But I think it would be, but I'm just asking, because we already stubbed their toe on that one, so. That was a special case. And you will make sure they understand they have the option of Zoom or.
Yes.
And if, and they can Zoom during their time slots, so can we lay some time slots on these?
Um.
Have we voted or we still?
Well, no, we're still in discussion. Uh, I would say. Uh, we're starting that at eleven, do we need to, uh, I would say.
We had a half hour built in for a free meeting, from ten thirty to eleven. Great, change the workshop to finish at ten thirty.
Okay.
So we could work on our questions and stuff.
I think we, we can finalize those at ten thirty to eleven and start our interviews at eleven, I think if we go eleven. Twelve, if everybody would be doing that day, it'd be eleven, twelve, one and two. Uh, then give us an opportunity to.
Forty, forty five minutes each with fifteen minutes in between, makes it run along, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, and then, uh. If, uh. I think I would wait until I spoke to these individuals to put it to a specific person.
Order does not matter to me.
Okay, does that sound good to you, sir, eleven, twelve, one and two? And then, uh. If we have anything, any of them that go to the thirty first, that would need to, that would drop.
Right, one hour off, yeah.
And, uh, then for your guys' information as well, I'm. Uh, if. Time permits, I am scheduled to go to the. Hospital district board meeting and give them an update on the ambulance in service and whatnot. Uh, which, with the, with that schedule, it should work for me anyway. All right, any other discussion on this?
We absolutely had to be available, uh, I would be available Saturday morning. Not ideal for me, but I'd have to cancel two other appointments if we had to do, but I think. Before the meeting on the thirty first, we could function as well too. If we have to, hopefully we won't.
Let me, let me contact these people then after we vote, and we can do that.
Actually, for me, if we had to do it late Saturday, I could be available then. Four o'clock, something like that, if we had to.
I'm gonna go through what we have, uh, and then.
Let's finish the vote.
Yeah. Talk about that. Uh, so any further discussion on this? No. Okay. Anything, nothing from online, so those in favor of advancing candidates. A, D, E, and G. Uh, while maintaining the anonymity of those candidates until a decision is made. Signified by saying aye.
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 And the wording is too, we had confirmation on the hire. Not when we're making a decision.
Okay, so if you could.
Which is what we've always done, so.
Reflect that, please. Okay, so that motion carried.
You're gonna make some phone calls now before we, are we gonna adjourn or go into recess?
I was going to recess the meeting if we had no additional items of business, and then we will reconvene at eleven AM for that executive session.
Bye.
We, uh, before you do that, so I have a question. I'm just afraid Kevin's gonna end up being on the phone with these four applicants, and then the schedules just go to hell in a heartbeat. Would, would it be helpful if we threw out the possibility of doing an interview or two this afternoon?
Stuff that you have, that you have, you know, cover.
No, I think posted.
Let's cry, you can't, let's cry.
Uh, we could move. I would be available later in the day tomorrow. As well, if we needed to do a late interview.
Yeah, it wouldn't have to be eleven to two for me, I'd be available whenever. I just am afraid you're gonna get on the phone and go, oh my gosh, this guy can do it at five, but we never talked about it, so. I think they're gonna be flexible and really want the job, unless they've got something.
Would you be good with some later in the day tomorrow? Okay. That's an option, I will try to do this eleven to two, if not, then I can skip a some little later in the day as well. Right. Uh. Any additional business?
Uh, just. Obviously, and we were scheduled for that Zoom at eleven, I've got two. I know we. If you can't find it, uh, I can, I can operate off of my. Black drive.
So, if that's the case then.
I've got.
Uh, I'd like to see it's probably, so we're ready to do that at eleven, uh, if we reconvene at ten fifty.
Okay.
Uh, so, that being the case, uh. Do we have any public comment before I do that?
Yeah, I got one hand raised.
Reggie.
Hello, good morning, I just have one, um, suggestion for future hires. And that maybe if you guys had a rubic, a rubric, as you evaluate. The applications, then perhaps it might make this process a little more efficient and clear. Uh, just offering a suggestion for the future.
Thank you, Reggie. Yes, good point.
Use one, so.
So. We didn't discuss it as such, uh. Okay, anything else, I'm not hearing anything here. That being the case, uh, I will recess this meeting, and we will reconvene at ten fifty. AM. AM.
So while he's doing that, real quick, um, C-Dog does not want us to involve in get divulge how much money we have.
Yeah, I remember that from before.
Yeah, we're good because significantly.
Otherwise they'll use it all of a sudden.
Are we up and running?
We are up and running. So whenever you guys are ready, I'll fire up. Okay. Good morning. Uh, the time is now ten fifty six a.m. Again, I'm Kevin Day, Chair of the Costa County Board of Commissioners, and I will reconvene uh this meeting uh of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, we have one thing left on our agenda, which is an executive session for negotiations with Baseline Engineering Corporation on the sidewalk project. And uh there will be no action taken after this. Uh, so uh this will be an executive session for that purpose. We will come back out and close the meeting uh the the B O C C meeting down at that time without taking any action. And I would move that we go into executive session uh for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy, and or instructing negotiators under CRS Section twenty four dash six dash four oh two, parent four, parent E. Do I have a second? I have a motion on the floor. You go into executive session uh for negotiations. Uh, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. At this time, we will go and we will uh recess this meeting and go into executive session.